...two thousand nineteen, and it's six o'clock. Roll call, please.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Casper?
Here.
Counselor Hinton?
Here.
Counselor Hoagland?
Here.
Counselor Coos?
Present.
Counselor Mark?
Here.
And Counselor Parsons is excused.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and thank you for joining us tonight. First thing we have is a consent agenda. We have a consent agenda that consists of Item One, Oregon Liquor Control Commission, a request for new outlet, full on premises and off premises, sales liquor license for M&amp;P Authentic Thai Cuisine LLC, known as P&amp;M Thai, oh, I see, M&amp;P Thai Noodle. Item Two is regular meeting minutes of work session, February fourth, two thousand nineteen. Number Three is regular meeting minutes of work session, February ninth, two thousand nineteen. Number Four is regular meeting minutes of meeting on February eleventh of City Council of two thousand nineteen. And number Five is regular meeting minutes of regular meeting on February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. I'll ask, I'm gonna hold number Four for deliberation. Any others that counsel needs pulled?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I had a kind of a minor correction on the February nine minutes and also February twenty-five.
Can you, are they just grammatical or?
Yeah, it's like one word change.
Okay. Can you just send those to the city recorder on both those? That'd be great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I also had a few typo corrections that I have sent to city recorder.
That'd be great. So with those corrections, grammatical, no substance, right, on those?
On those.
Well, a little bit, so, yeah, I would've called mine substance.
So then why don't you share it with us and then if?
Yeah, so, and it's really just a one word, but, so on the February nine, I marked packet page thirteen here.
Okay.
If, if we're on thirteen, there's a section under expand economic opportunities, and you go down to the entry that says elimination of blight, and the last item has my name on it, and it says, or, am I giving enough time there?
Yep.
Would like court enforcement to address mold issues, and I wasn't talking about vacation rental dwellings. It was really long-term rental dwellings. That was my concern.
So we can make that change?
That was the work session.
That was a work session.
February nine work session.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
The other?
Thank you.
Other thing I had was on the February twenty-five minutes, I have packet page thirty-one.
Okay.
I'm not there yet.
Oh.
No, that didn't work. Again, it was something that I said, so let me see. Oh, under city manager reports, second paragraph, Counselor Mark notes that on the plastic bag ban, it appears that it will be a statewide ban, and there may be no action taken, I think I meant no action needed by Lincoln City Council. That's what I was trying to say there. Emphasis on May. I don't mind if we do, I just.
Right, great. And with that, entertain a motion to approve one through five minus four, as amended?
I move to approve the consent agenda items number one, two, three, and five.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none. Then on item four, which is the regular meeting minutes, February eleventh, there was a change made, I think Counselors saw it, where separated motions, to be more distinguished, where a motion was made and then amended, and I think those minutes have been changed to reflect such, but I wanted to make sure everybody saw that and was okay with it. Okay? With that, entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes as amended for February eleventh twenty, I mean, February eleventh, twenty nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay, hearing none.
Your Honor, there's a question of the, any agenda changes?
Yes, I was gonna bring that up. Right now, Counsel, I'd like to add to the city manager and city attorney item, that would be J, that would bring up the media news recommendation from the hearing officer at that spot. It's not there right now, so it needs to be inserted. So when we get there, I'll call it. At this time, why don't we do public comments? We've got public comments, and be, as we do that, let me read this disclaimer. No law shall be passed restraining the free expression of opinion or restricting the right to speak, write, or print freely on any subject whatever, but every person shall be responsible for the abuse of this right. Be advised, statements and comments by citizens under comments from citizens present or on public hearings or public comment items are solely the opinions and statements of the speaker and are not statements by the city of Lincoln City and do not represent the opinions of the city, its officers, and employees. With that, did anybody wish to address the counsel? Yeah, please come forward. You, oh, either one, and just pull the mic right into you. If you'd give us just your name, would be great.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Okay, yeah, let's get it down here. My name is Gordy Podraskey. I am a, I am a full-time, year-round resident of Lincoln City, and I would like to discuss my concerns regarding the climbing of the sea cliffs directly beneath our property and the absence of adequate signage along the beachfront, discouraging this behavior. My wife and I have reached out to both the Oregon State Parks Department and the Lincoln City non-emergency police, asking for assistance for increased beach patrol due to excessive climbing of the sea cliffs. During Week One of spring break, directly beneath just our property alone, we encountered an access of over forty individuals climbing the sea cliffs, many in large groups, causing significant disruption to this fragile environment. Upon explaining that climbing the sea cliffs is prohibited, the majority of these individuals responded with, "I am sorry, I did not know." We believe that this ongoing problem is primarily due to ineffective signage along the beach level, emphasizing that climbing the sea cliffs is against the law. Starting from the Canyon Drive access point, going north, there is only one sign within approximately three hundred and seventy yards along the base of the sea cliffs. This sign is mounted on a metal post that is completely bent, face down the majority of the time, and unreadable. We, along with many of our fellow full-time residents who also own property above the sea cliffs, believe that increased and more effective communicated signage would be a deterrent to the situation. We are requesting a contact name and a phone number of the individual we can partner with in this effort. We are all aware that this problem has been ongoing for quite some time, and we ask for your assistance to better increase our efforts in this matter and hope you will take it as serious as you would if it were your property, as it were your property you were trying to protect and preserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. You know, if you would, would you hand the recorder, Kathy, your contact information, name and contact information, that'd be helpful, and
Sure.
somebody will get back to you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, do we know who has jurisdiction over those cliffs?
State.
Depending on where the line is, it'd be state, but, but both state and city could.
If I can just interject a little bit?
You need to get to the mic.
Yeah. A little bit, just in our conversations, it seems like there's a little bit of a problem with that. What we have been told, when we talked to the police department, it sounded like they were, they were thinking that it was the State Parks property owned. But when we talked to the State Parks, they said that from our property line down to the beach line, it's Lincoln City, unless you're down at Rhodes End. The State Park Recreation has all of that area. The cliffs are smaller, but supposedly that's their jurisdiction, at least that's what we were told. So it seems like there is a little bit of confusion on that between some parts.
We can take care of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Anybody else that didn't get a chance to sign up and wish to speak to the counsel?
Seeing none, then we'll move on with our presentations. We have a presentation Sexual Assault Awareness Month for April. Looks like we got a familiar face.
It's that time of year again. Hi, everybody. My name's Michelle Gaylor. I'm, I work for My Sister's Place. I'm a certified sexual assault rape victims advocate and the executive bookkeeper. I have some packets for each of you that I'll give you after I leave here for you. So April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, as well as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so here I am again to just give you some statistics and some other joyful news about the reality that is sexual assault and sexual violence in our community. Sexual violence happens in every community and affects people of all genders and ages. Sexual violence is defined as any type of unwanted sexual contact. This includes words and actions of sexual nature against a person's will and without their consent. And consent is defined as it must be freely given and informed, and a person can change their mind at any time. And so asking for, asking a question, then waiting for a yes response, and then a continued yes, so. For anybody that's interested in Googling, there's a great little three or four-minute video. It's something like, called something like Consent as Tea, and it's, it's a very good analogy about, you know, drunk people don't want tea, and it's pretty, it's pretty clever, and it really defines it well, and it's good for all ages, so I recommend to anybody that's interested, take a look at that. Forms of sexual violence include everything from rape and child sexual abuse to non-consensual image sharing. It runs the yam in between those things. And so, but it impacts the entire community. Nearly one in five women in the United States have experienced raped or attempted rape sometime in their lives. One in seventy-one men in the U.S. experienced rape or attempted rape. And this, and then an estimated thirty-two point three percent of multiracial women, twenty-seven point five percent of American Indian, Alaskan Native women, twenty-one point two percent of non-Hispanic Black women, and twenty point five percent of non-Hispanic white women, and thirteen point six percent of Hispanic women were raped during their lifetimes. So it's proportional to, you know, it's, it definitely, the more oppressed group of, or population, they have higher incidence of sexual violence against them. Victims often know the person who sexually assaulted them. Nearly three out of four adolescents who have been sexually assaulted were victimized by someone they knew well, and one-fifth were committed by a family member. It's important to state that victims are never at fault. Sexual assault has nothing to do with a person drinking too much, trying to have a good time, or getting carried away, nor does it have to do with what someone was wearing, how they were acting, or what type of relationship they have with the person who abused them. Violating another person is a choice, and it's about power and control, not, it's really not about sex so much as power and control over somebody. Frighteningly, rape is often not reported or convicted. A person may choose not to report to law enforcement or tell anyone about a victimization they experienced for many reasons, including a fear of not being believed, being afraid of retaliation, shame, or fear of being blamed, pressure from others, distrust of law enforcement, and a desire to protect the attacker for some reason. However, when it is reported, less than one-third of rapes are reported. Five point seven are prosecuted, percent are prosecuted, and point seven percent result in felony convictions. And that is just shameful. It's just, the process is long and arduous and so re-traumatizing for the, for the victim that it's, and the results are so low that it's hardly worth prosecuting. So when, when people say, well, you know, why didn't they report it? Or why wasn't, you know, why wasn't something done? That's why. And another surprising statistic is that less than two, where I have a number here for you, oh, false reported is a tiny, tiny amount. It's, I have that somewhere, but it is, it's like two to eight percent at most is, are false reports. In many, many studies, the highest being eight percent of false reports. So believing survivors is the easiest and most, one of the most effective ways of showing community support, just believing people and not victim blaming. Because the cost and impact of sexual assault to the community, the lifetime cost of rape per victim is a hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Annually, rape costs the U.S. more than any other crime at a hundred and twenty-seven billion, followed by assault at ninety-three billion, murder at seventy-one billion, and drunk driving, including fatalities, at sixty-one billion. And eighty percent of women and thirty-five percent of men report significant short or long-term impacts such as PTSD after a rape. So as most of you guys know, My Sister's Place, we're in our thirty-ninth year of helping domestic violence, elder abuse, stalking, and sexual assault survivors. Lincoln City is always a generous supporter from the very beginning. I just recently heard that you guys were our very first, first monetary donor. The story is, is quite funny. I guess the ladies from the church came with pictures of the injuries to a bunch of the victims, and Lincoln City wrote a check then and has been writing one ever since, and we appreciate you very, very much. So I just wanted to come and, and talk to you guys about it again, like I do twice a year, say hello to all my friends on the city council, and, and just, yeah, just continue, please, doing what you're doing. You guys are awesome. We appreciate you.
Michelle, do you, do you have any statistics, local, Lincoln County or Oregon, that you?
I mean, I do. I know that we served six, in domestic violence and sexual assault, we served six hundred and four individuals last year. Thirty-eight women, twenty-two children, and three men came through our shelter for a total of, I think it's two thousand and four bed nights last year alone. We have our legal court advocate, I think something like three hundred and eighty-four incidents where she went to court with victims, helped with restraining orders, et cetera. So six hundred and four unique individuals were served, were victims of domestic violence or sexual assault in our county last year. And we do not take children as our primary clients, so those are all adults. To children, that's a whole nother statistic, but, so, yeah. Anybody else have any questions?
Other questions? Counselor?
Just as always, the best and easiest way is to get in touch with you and how, how people who may have trouble getting in touch with you.
Our hotline, thank you Riley, you ask every time, is twenty-four seven. We have an advocate on call every day, day and night, so you can always talk to an advocate. Law enforcement is very familiar with that. We get lots of calls from Lincoln City Police, and we're always happy about that. It's five four one nine nine four five nine five nine. And so, yeah, again, thank you. Again, and also, first week in May, May, I think it's third or fourth through the tenth is our annual closing for Shelter Clean. Councilwoman Casper came last year for a tour, and we enjoyed having her. Anybody else would like the tour? They're welcome to come. Just give us a call, come on down. We might put a rag in your hand and get you to clean something. No, we won't. But we would be happy to show off our beautiful facility that Lincoln City has helped, I know, that helped us create, and just walk you through and show you what we do. So thank you all very much. Do you guys want me to just leave these here for you? Is this fine, or do you want me to bring them up?
You could've given to Kathy if you would.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. See you guys in October.
Nick, I understand you've got a co-presenter with you, but a no-show so far? She's a ghost. Do we need her? Good, all right. Nick Lupo is with the principal Taft, seven through twelve, but he's not here for that tonight. He's for, music is instrumental.
Okay, I will, I'll start going. I think I did this one before, something very similar.
What? Oh, Nick Lupo?
Oh, sorry, I can.
Go ahead and give your.
I'm Nick Lupo. I'm the principal of our Taft seven twelve, and through that capacity, we've done a couple different things with our music program. And part of that is the Music and Instrumental Foundation that we've kind of started. So I'll kind of walk through how that got started and how it affects the school. It's kind of the main gist of the presentation. So basically, our, Music is Instrumental is our name, supporting high-quality music education, performances, and instruction for students on the central Oregon coast. So right now, it's pretty much Lincoln City that we have been servicing, but we're trying to get, write more grants and do things to help support other schools inside Lincoln County. So about five years ago, we got a grant from the Oregon Community Foundation, and they started a project called Studios to Schools, and they set out to find eighteen or nineteen different rural programs that wanted to bring arts and education into the, into the schools. And the way they did that was, they said, let's find a nonprofit organization and try to see if we can pair with them with a school board or a school. So we were selected. So we got seventy thousand dollars every single year for the first three years, totaling about two hundred and ten thousand dollars, and then we were able to reapply for our fourth and fifth year for sustainability for thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So that was five years ago. So as we kind of progressed through that, we ended our fifth year, which is ending in July one, our fifth year, and we started a nonprofit called Music and Instrumental to kind of get that same stability going on, and we can kind of get partnerships that we've already built that wanted to contribute money. We also contributed, we also had Cultural Center, Celestial Music Festival, you know, Lincoln City. We all have a lot of people that we've made connections with, and we didn't want those to fall off the map once that grant went away. So that's kind of how it was born a little bit. Some nice pictures. So basically, you can kind of look and see what we, we serve here. Most of you guys are familiar with Lincoln County, so we serve about five thousand, five hundred and eighty students. We're pretty big, and we give free lunch and free breakfast to all of our kids, if you didn't know that. About eight hundred and twenty-five students are classified as homeless, representing about fifteen percent of our student population, and that's through the whole Lincoln County. And all of our students participate in a program to develop critical thinking skills and need to graduate, so we're working on that, and that's sort of our avid piece that we do. So September twenty fourteen, back when this first started, we had Andy Hordechoke. He was our music teacher throughout Lincoln County, or sorry, Lincoln City, and he had about forty music students throughout there. And then today, we service just everybody from K-six and seven twelve are getting music every single day or a couple times a week through K-two, and then through our elective courses over at seven twelve. One of the big projects that we did when we got the Oregon Community Foundation was we elected to have sixth-grade band be kind of our flagship. So as they entered sixth grade, they were asked to have mandatory band along with everything else. So that's kind of one of the biggest pieces. So I'll start with K-two. K-two is a music teacher, and they're on a rotation, I think every third day, they go get music from our, our teacher there, Gwen Lottie, and she services about four hundred students at Ocean Lake. You can kind of see him there. It's a picture of her. Through our grant process, too, we've also gotten drums, xylophones, ukuleles, different, different things that we use to help with reading and, or to help with rhythms and music and those kind of things. We also use them a little bit for emotional stability and emotional regulation. This is a mural that I did when I was a principal at Taft Elementary. So we actually did, this piece of it came from a music piece that they did that somebody wrote for Celestial Music Festival, and they also always did it as a kid's show. So part of that kid's show is they had these kind of instruments come to life. So Krista Eddy, she's a part of Lincoln, Lincoln City, she's a local artist, and she actually helped me go into classrooms and do lessons on caricatures. And through that, she kind of had them make faces and do different things, and then she said, okay, let's put those into the instruments. So she did that piece of it, and then these are actually all of the student drawings. So all the student drawings up and down that lead into our music room, and so they helped draw it. So she kind of, you know, outlined it, made it as good, and then they came in and painted it, a few students at a time, and then she then put the finishing touches on it. She, when I was principal, she tried to do that with just about everything. We brought her in for third grade, and she would come in and do different things. Then it's our, like I said, our sixth grades. So we've been doing this for five years, and every single year, we've had sixth-grade band. The first year was optional, and the last four years, we've had it been mandatory. So mandatory mathematics, English, and music, we kind of say, and they have that every single day of their sixth-grade life. So they always go to music, they always go to math, they always go to English every single day. So this, this year, we have kind of an anomaly. We have a hundred and fifty-eight students. Normally, our classes run about a hundred and twenty students or so, so we've got about, about thirty or forty extra students in this sixth-grade class, so it's kind of a challenge. And when we first started doing, doing music, they always used to go to the high school. So I used to bus them to the high school every single day and then bus them back. So they'd actually do it first period, so the buses, since we ran three six, three twelve buses the same, they'd actually bus, get off the bus, go in the music room, they'd have band, and then I actually bussed them home. They actually have breakfast at the high school. This year, we're actually housing them at the elementary school, so they do band and choir. We added choir this year because there were so many kids, and we actually do that right at the elementary school at the end of the day. There's kind of our choir kids. Each year, part of the grant and part of some of our funding, we buy shirts. So these shirts have evolved, kind of every year. You can kind of see the pictures on there. So, so you might see older kids with those shirts lying around, five or six years old, different versions of this Music is Instrumental piece of it.
Mr. Lupo, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go back one, just so everybody can point out my son with the green hair. You know, just for kids.
That's good. So apart of that, we never had a So apart of that, we never had a kid pay for an instrument yet. So as we started the program with Andy Hordachoke about five years ago, we literally were checking dumpsters and pawn shops and all these kind of things to get instruments. Our first class was about 60, 66 kids, and so we had to get instruments in random, but Andy was an avid horn collector. So he, we actually went to his garage, he had about 40 different horns, clarinets, trumpets, and saxophones. So actually, a lot of his stuff came to us from him, and we'd repair them and help work with them, and then donations and things like that. It wasn't until about two years ago, two and a half years ago, we really said, "What are we doing?" So we actually took one of the years of funding, and we said, "Let's just go," went to Tiger Music, said, "What can you give us? How can you just give us 60 instruments?" So we actually bought 60 instruments and brought them to the, to the Taft. So from that, we probably had, you know, you can see how many saxons we have, that's just too many, too many to ever have unless you have a huge sixth-grade band. So we actually created a whole music library, so actually checked into our system using like Barco, just like you would put on a book. So they actually can go over there and say, "Oh, I'm Joey Smith," and click, and they get to check out a saxophone or a clarinet, just like they would a book. So the biggest piece of this is, five years later, our kids are now in ninth and 10th grade, and so what's cool is Mike Freel, who has started with me about three or four years ago, is now the band director of the high school. And one of the things that he's done is he's actually taking his choir, his symphonic band, his concert band, and his jazz bands to OSAA competitions, so that's the Oregon State Athletics Association, and they go ahead and they compete. They just went on Friday to Seaside, and they scored about, I don't know, they won by a good amount, but they won, beat the competition, and Seaside, and those little tiny competitions they have throughout the year, you actually qualify for state based on the scores you get those competitions. So he's already qualified for Symphonic Band State, he's already qualified for Jazz Band State, and he's hosting a jazz festival on Tuesday. So a first, first time, I think, on Lincoln County soil kind of thing. He's hosting, six different schools are coming, they're 3A or 4A schools, they'll be at there competing with, with judges and all those kind of things at the school all day tomorrow. So that's kind of really cool that we're offering that, that piece of it. So Mike's done a great job of, of getting kids involved and then really showing like, this is a, this is a sport, you know, we go and compete just like a volleyball team does. So he actually placed in state, like off the top of my head, I don't remember, but his highest placer was the jazz band. Jazz band just went ahead, and I'm part of Rotary, and a part of Rotary, I brought a jazz band to co- and showcase over at the Rotary Luncheon one of the weeks. So this is them at the Rotary Luncheon. What might say in here? One, one big piece of this is, is if you went to the jazz band and said, "Hey, how many kids are graduating this year?" One kid or two kids would raise their hand. We have about nine or 10 kids in the jazz band that are ninth graders, and they all started in our sixth-grade band program that started four or five years ago. So it's very cool to see that those kids love a little music and how they kind of go through there, yeah. Ken Popowski, Celestial Music Festival, we've been pairing with them for four or five years with the, with them, and they've been helping us with funding. And you can see kind of in the background, that's Andy Hordachoke, who was our first music director back there. He works in a different city now. So just to kind of add things that go with music, we want to make sure we're, you know, incorporating the academics and achievement with all everything, increased attendance, school completion, and the social-emotional stuff. And, you know, anytime we can get students involved in things in the school, we'll definitely hopefully help them progress through and graduate. More statistics, better increased rates of SAT scores, and hopefully, if they're involved, like I said, you know, hopefully they're sticking through the program and, oh, we're getting them to graduate at a higher level and be able to attend college. So one of the things, this is just data I had from the first year we did it, and we said, "Oh, we're going to do sixth-grade band." And it was about 60 kids who did it over the 120 or so kids. And I said, "Okay, what would it look like, this is our non-band students, and what does that look like?" Well, this is their achievement level. So that's their achievement level if they weren't in band at all. Then I said, "Oh, what does it look like if they are in band?" So you can notice the difference between the achievement levels of the students that were in band and weren't in band, and we were saying, "Well, of course, the kids who opted in were the kids who were affluent, and parents said, 'Hey, join band,' and the kids who weren't were the lower-level kids who did not really think they could do band." So we actually said, "Hey, why are we, we're missing a whole subgroup of kids that we did not let, give, give an opportunity to have band every single day." So we actually took that subset and the other subset, and we said, "Hey, we have to have all, all, all the kids need to take band, we need to make sure it happens because we think it will benefit most kids." So this is kind of our data of why we, why we made it 100% non-optional, I guess, or Just some statistics for this year, you can see the kind of the breakdown on the left side is, do kids stay in music? So you can see all the number of eighth graders, about 30%, 30% of our eighth grade, 30% of our kids are eighth graders and ninth graders, you know, I think it's about half, more than half. It's kind of cool. 67% of our band students participated in the program, so we have about two-thirds of our kids come from our sixth-grade band program, and as we weed out those 10th, 11th, 12th graders, it'll be just about everybody. And then you can see on the other side how many years they stay in the band. So right now, we get about two years, 30% of our kids have at least stayed in band for two years. So they're required, they're just electing to have that. So once they get into high school, they're saying, "Yeah, I want that as an elective," which is kind of a cool thing. So again, that's another 50% or so. This is just quotes we had from the kids. So it's just, you can kind of see some of those, some of the ones I like. In the beginning, I couldn't even make a noise, but later I became a second chair, so I think things are going pretty well. So, you know, holding a trumpet is complicated, and it takes, it takes hard to take care of, but I feel honored to have one in my possession. So just some cool quotes down there. I don't read them all for time's sake, but pretty fun. And we usually try to survey or do something with the kids at the end of the year and get reflections from them. Last piece is, we had so much money, and we were like, "What do we do with our facilities? What do they look like?" So our stage actually was not painted or anything, so we actually painted it black. Robie's Furniture came in and helped us out, Nace Herbert doing some paint, and we have, if you can look on the very top, you can see, we spent money on lights, we spent money on like a projector, we spent money on a new sound system, and that was in every school. So every, every school got a new sound system, every school got mics, and if we didn't lights or anything like that, we do that as well. There's our sixth-grade band with our two directors and our 120 kids on there with our painted background. If you notice too, if you've ever been to Taft, there used to be stairs there. So they actually, we actually built the stage out, so the stage actually covers the old stairs. We have more, we can actually do plays. Shrek the Musical, shout-out, if you want to go check it out on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. So, and you can see on the bottom there, when we was both of them, Mike, Mr. Freel actually used to, has started a drum line, and he had one of his percussionists actually just graduated, so he hasn't started that back up yet, but it was pretty cool to see. And then our community room. So our community room, if you've been to the high school as well, also the stage was kind of back, so we actually built the stage back out, put new flooring, painted the whole thing, got new lights, and then put the seats back. We didn't have the money to do the seats, so we actually put the old seats back, but looks pretty cool. That was the crew that did it. I think she got a Lincoln County Commission's Economic Development Grant to help fund that refurbish of that room. And there's what it looks like now. That's pretty sweet. And again, Ken Popowski and Dick Hyman came and kind of did some music. It's pretty cool. Just a breakdown of our money. So we're, we're starting this foundation. We did Winter Fest, if you're familiar with Winter Fest, that usually Celestial Music Festival puts on as a fundraiser. We actually took it over this year and did it through Music is Instrumental to raise funds, so we can be kind of solidified over the next year with some things that we do. New instruments, $36,000 to carry our library and just to make sure that we're cleaning them and actually taking care of them, our $6,000 or $7,000 ukuleles. And then the biggest thing that we do is we recruit local musicians. So our sixth-grade band's so giant that one teacher is hard, so we actually recruit Lincoln City Pops, people who are retired, and we just actually, we actually pay them to come into the schools for an hour, hour, hour and a half a day, and they're experts at their, at their percussion or brass or flutes or anything like that. So we actually pay them as local residents. We call them the OBGs, the old band guys. They're pretty cool. And then scholarships. So we're trying to get that piece of it where kids are progressing through and they need money to go to college, and so we can offer them a scholarship in the coming years. That's it.
Boy, that's great. What a story.
Yeah.
Terrific.
Fabulous program.
Are there areas that you see the community assisting more, or you could use assistance?
I, I mean, you know, obviously monetarily is always a good thing when you have so many instruments to take care of and to purchase, so that's a huge piece. You know, the in-kind type of donations of just the support is also good. But anytime we, we have music concerts and those kind of things, we're always looking for ticket takers, local businesses to provide gift cards and stuff like that to help support the program. So I think, you know, coming out and supporting is just a huge piece of it, and knowing we exist sometimes, like, it's like, oh. So I know, I think Rotary and Kiwanis, we try to do those once or twice a year to get people to know, like, oh, what are the kids actually involved in and doing? Mike also does, the band programs also do winter, spring, and fall concerts. So those are just cool things that we do, and then if he makes state, we got to pay for it all. You know, anytime we go to state, usually it's a one or two-day event, or they're traveling back and forth, so that usually state, state for any sport is not in the budget, pretty much. So if we're going to state, where it means we're paying for hotels, paying for busing, you know, the teachers, teachers volunteering basically to go and sleep overnight somewhere, so, so yeah.
Boy, that's great. Any questions?
Mr. Lupo, did you say that the original grant was ending?
It is ending, yeah. So five years, the grant was, from the Oregon Community Foundation is now done, and so that's kind of, we've kind of overlapped a little bit with our new nonprofit, the Music is Instrumental nonprofit. So that started January 1st, and so we'll end this year with the grant probably in August, basically.
Are you continuing to get support from the Celets Festival, Music Festival?
Yeah, so they continue to still support us in, in some of our efforts. We didn't want to rely on them. So basically, it's like, oh, do we want to keep carrying underneath them and still doing fundraisers and stuff underneath them? That was, that was something we discussed, or we want to try to use our own nonprofit to try to facilitate that. Salashan actually has kind of picked us up as a little bit of a, a thing, so if you've heard of the Music in the Park stuff they're going to do this summer, we're actually going to be one of the nonprofits that they are supporting using that. So they're free concerts, but we're going to be helping, you can come help benefit us by going to those concerts and donating. So it's kind of cool. But yeah, we still partner with them for sure.
I noticed you have a lot of money for instruments. Do you also allocate something for repair and maintenance?
Yeah, that was the cleaning, I think it's here. Oops. Yeah, 6,700 right there. So clean 135 music instruments, so the cleaning and the repair is there, but that's another thing too, like, a kid, it's just like a book now, so if a kid checks it out and doesn't want to bring it back, it's like, "Uh, you owe us $450 for a trumpet," and you know, they can't pay it. So we do eat some costs, and we've just wrestled with, do we make them rent them? Do we do a deposit in the beginning? We just wrestle with all these things in the beginning to see what we can do, but we haven't actually pulled the trigger on some of them yet. We feel like we'd lose people if we said, "You have to pay $100 to join band." So, so we try to do that in other ways and talk to the community about donating, so that we just, we can, you know, it'll go through all kids.
Nick, if I could, I really appreciate you coming and, and this. I would encourage you to come back to City Council-
Sure.
-and use the opportunity to get in, the coverage that we get, anyway, of these kind of meetings, to reach the community. The thing I like about these things, and would invite you back, is if you could share with us and the community those things that we don't typically hear about, and I think this is a good one, and, you know, sports and stuff-
Yeah.
-get a lot, get a lot of coverage, but I know a lot more is going on in our school system, and it'd be, with, with great success, as you've shown.
Sure.
So if you could think about, you know, even on a quarterly basis, would be-
Yeah.
-great, just to share with us.
I'll make my lease come back next time. That's good. Yeah, I, I think it's, it's good to publicize all that stuff, and I try to, we try to do it through our little venues of Rotary and Kiwanis and Chamber and stuff like that, so we appreciate anybody's willing to listen, you know?
Great. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. It's a great program.
Great job with kids. Appreciate it.
Okay, so can I do my brag since-
Riley did his, yeah.
All four of my grandsons have gone through that program-
Okay.
...and one of them wants to make a career out of it now.
Really?
He's one of the ninth graders in jazz band.
All right.
So it's a great program.
Looks like there's a scholarship waiting.
I know, I'm looking at that, yeah.
Now, those are the kind of things, nice to hear, too, where there's some personal touch, you know, and get the real inside story, so, thank you both. All right, let's move on then to, we've got ordinances. Our first ordinance is ordinance number 2019-17.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is the first reading of ordinance 2019-17, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.24, Visitor and Convention Committee, amending Section 2.24010, established, amending Section 2.24060, Powers and Duties, and adding a new Section 2.24080, Grant Review Procedures and Appeal Process. I will point out, there is a typo in the title, there's a period after 060, should not be, and there is a typo on page three, Section 3, the word procedures is spelled wrong, and ask for the city recorder be authorized to correct those, ask for approval of first reading, and if it's unanimous, we'll move on to second reading by way of a summary of this ordinance. Does a couple things, acknowledges that Explore Lincoln City is an assumed business name which the VCC is now using, the VCB is now using, authorizes the committee to be called the VCC, not, instead of VCC Committee, they can be called the Explore Lincoln City Committee, but again, it's only an assumed business name, the VCC still exists. Also clarifies that the recommendations of the VCC, the committee, go to the director or to the City Council, depending on what it is that they're making a recommendation of. When it comes to grants, it's to the director. The director makes a decision. The city manager is not the person making that decision. The city manager has to make a decision on an appeal. So the clarification is that the director makes a decision, and his decision is subject to an appeal to the city manager, not to the City Council. And that's the case even if the VCC director, the VCB director, is somehow conflicted. The procedure under 244 is you ask your supervisor to appoint someone else, so if Ed has a conflict, you ask Ron to appoint someone else to make the decision, someone else in the VCB would make it, Liz or somebody, and then the appeal still goes to Ron. So that's just, what this is about, is clarification, and staff asked to put this together, and Ron agreed, and here we are. So we're looking for approval of first reading, and if that's okay, we'll move on to second reading.
Is there a motion for first reading?
Mr. Mayor, if I have a, you know, I read, you know, what are the options to do, the council options, you know? And it was, oh, sorry, I just lost it. You know, if we, if we wanted to revise powers and duties, do we still want to go forward with the first reading? Because I have some big changes I'd like to talk about.
Yeah, what we do is, if there's a motion, if there's a motion to go on first reading, and then we deliberate, and that would be, you know, the, the time to go through, because if we turn down the first reading-
There's not a question.
Yeah.
Can I ask if, okay, so the, this ordinance is for clarification of the appeal process, and the amendments to powers and duties are basically striking the city manager in two sections to clarify, the recommendation is not to him, it's to the director, and then adding the provision, basically, that they have to follow the approved grant procedures per whatever resolution, and through the 224080. So are your changes-
Fundamental to-
About those or about?
No, not about the, what the VCC is and its powers that it holds.
Yeah. That wouldn't be this then, that would be the policies regarding their grant process, if that's, if that's where you're going.
It's not, but-
Oh.
Well, I guess I'd suggest that this is a, this is a discreet thing, but if you have an issue about the VCB in its entirety, and you want to talk about their enabling ordinances and things like that, that's something you could bring up a separate motion and say, "Let's, I don't know if you need a work session, or I don't know what exactly the I don't know if you need a work session, or I don't know what exactly the issues are.
Sure. All right, well, let's do that.
Okay.
All right, so then, I'd like to make a motion to approve first reading of the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the first reading with the second. All in favor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, oh.
You said we were-
You're right. Let's deliberate now, because I've got some stuff, too, so, thank you. Thank you.
I had two, one's gonna seem really small, because it's just a comma, but on page, packet page forty, under B, and the city attorney just said that the whole point of this is that the committee recommend the top, so, under B, policies and procedures, line twenty-one is what I'm looking at, ranking the applications and recommending the top-ranked applications with funding levels indicated to the director. The comma after indicated actually threw me for a second. I think we want no comma there after indicated.
Agreed.
Because you're recommending the applications to the director.
Yes.
And then, the other question I had, under C, says appeal, and it says a person, firm, et cetera, however organized and aggrieved by grant funding. Does that refer to the applicants, or could it be a non-applicant opposing a grant?
I think it could be a non-applicant. And I think that's because we could have a situation where someone feels that the process wasn't fair. Let's say, I believe the director had a conflict of interest, didn't disclose it, didn't, and then we would need an avenue to address that. That's why you have to identify what is the error. It's not just, you know, an applicant who doesn't get what they want and wants a second bite at the apple. This is supposed to be about correcting a fundamental error.
Interesting.
Couple things, too.
Yep, okay, Counselor. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I just have a question about the language in here, repeated a couple of times, as jurisdictional defect. I've just-
The, that's coming from case law, which basically tells you, if you, if you have a requirement to, you know, to file a valid appeal, you must sign the appeal application, submit the appeal fee, file during the appeal timeframe. That failure to do that is a jurisdictional defect. You don't have a valid appeal if you don't strictly comply with requirements. So, if you're going to appeal, you need to strictly comply. And there are a lot of luba cases that talk about this in the land use context, you know, the things about filing on time and submitting a proper application.
You know, I might sound like a broken record, but I would rather use language that everyone understands than, you know, legalese. Heard that from me a few times.
I'd like to be able to point at the case that says, says right here, if you use the words, "It is a jurisdictional defect," then you can't come in and argue later.
Okay, I have another question, which is, I still don't like it. Page forty, C four, the amount, a non-refundable appeal fee of a hundred dollars, that just seems a little steep to me. If, in fact, we're talking about nonprofits, and do they all have to be nonprofits, the people who are applying for the grants, because that's, their grant funds for nonprofits is on page thirty-nine, item C, section two, item C. So, if we're talking about nonprofits, and then we're saying, well, if you don't like the outcome or have a real issue to sort it out, it's gonna cost a hundred dollars, it just seems a little bit steep to me, but does that fit with it?
I didn't come up with a hundred dollars myself. It was, I believe it was the recommendation of the VCB staff. The other way we typically handle fees is the council established the applicable fee in a resolution. So, if you want, I'll just make up some language, not right now, that says that, and then you guys can decide what the appeal fee would be.
Because, I just want to say, because we do have the city, not, I'm not referring to the VCB right now, but the city has grants available for nonprofits through our budget cycle, and we don't charge, we don't, you know, as far as I know, we don't charge for appeals or even, I don't know, maybe you can help me out with that a little bit?
We're kind of all over the place when it comes to appeal fees. There is, at least in land use, there's certainly a requirement that we not charge more than, you know, what's absolutely necessary to cover our costs. And recently, we got rid of an appeal fee for distressed property registrations, because we didn't want to deter people from, you know, filing those applications. So, that wasn't an appeal fee, but it was an application fee.
Right.
I would think if the council wants to set whatever appeal fee they want to set, you could just say, "A non-refundable appeal fee as established by a resolution of the City Council." And then, if you decide as part of your fee-setting procedures that you're gonna make it zero, then that's what you do.
So, don't, appeal fees, so it has nothing to do with the time it takes to do the, I mean, I'm just trying to tie it to something. This seems arbitrary to me, and I'm just having a hard time with it, but-
I think it's entirely possible that a hundred dollars wouldn't cover the cost at all of any appeal, even if just involves the city manager as the person making the decision. Again, it's up to you, but I would simply punt here, and I'd say, "A non-refundable appeal fee as established by a resolution of the City Council." And then, you guys can decide as part of a fee resolution what it'll be.
Okay, that works.
Mr. Fattila, in that fee resolution, we have an existing one now with a whole long list of fees, so that's what you're speaking to, where that would be included?
That would be something that, like, last year, Debbie added-
Right.
-a couple of things, and we usually point out which new fees get added, and then we ask for public comment on any new fees as well.
I think that would fit better, because if we do want to change it, it'd be easier to go to the fee schedule, then.
Yes. So, that would be a change in paragraph C four, it would read, "A non-refundable appeal fee as established by a resolution of the City Council." If you want, we can get out of the, we can take the word "non-refundable" out.
Mr. Mayor, I just, my thought was, I mean, I see, I see some value in having a fee, because you want to discourage frivolous appeals, but you could have it set up that if the appeal is, wins, then the fee is refunded.
Yeah.
But you could build that into the fee schedule.
Right. I think, I like the idea of building it into the fee schedule resolution, rather than-
Okay. I can strike the word "non-refundable," and you guys can decide that.
Deal with it later, yeah.
Thank you.
Is that consensus, everybody all right, would that change to this?
That's good. I'm okay with that.
And that's actually the piece I had, so you took care of me, thank you.
Very welcome. Anytime.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
It says, "The VCB director is the decision-maker, decision-maker on all grant award applications unless recused, in which the city manager shall designate an alternate director for such applications." Because you said they would just give it to somebody, like Liz, but she's not a director.
But she'd be director pro temp, or whatever. For the day, she would be the director for purposes of that decision. Under chapter two forty-four, the conflict statutes, it says, if you're an employee and you have a conflict, you have to ask your supervisor, you have to inform them, tell them what the nature of the conflict is, and then they designate someone else. Now, Ron has, you know, could designate himself, but then that causes a problem, you can't appeal to yourself, so Ron would designate another staff person. And he could also, you know, like he would designate Richard Townsend to do something when Richard was here, that it would be another director's decision. He could point somebody else.
Well, hypothetically, I guess I look at it this way, since the director's wife would be writing a grant, but then you give it to an employee that who's under-
Yeah.
-that, to me, would be a conflict.
And that-
As if she said, no, and he didn't like that.
Well, that's true. That argument could be made, but it's up to the manager who makes that decision. Who, I use Liz as an example, but if, in fact, they wanted to avoid that allegation, they could appoint somebody else in a different department.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So, we're now calling the VCB the ELCC?
I'm not, Laura. Explore Lincoln City.
It's the VCC, it'll be the ELCC.
Okay, but, okay, then, then semantically going along here, then the VCB director, is that now the ELCC director, like in line twenty-three on page forty?
I'm gonna go with VCB director and VCC committee, and they're just acknowledging that they have an assumed business name, and so they may sometimes call themselves something else, but I'm still gonna call them the VCB and the VCC.
Okay, just so we all know the apples and oranges denotation.
Oh, one and the same.
Okay.
Whatever you call me, just call me for, not late. Any other?
Okay, not late.
For dinner.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
Don't call me late for dinner.
All right.
Just a thought, not to belabor this, but that business had designated an alternate director on that line twenty-five there under B, it'd say, designate an alternate decision-maker, or would that help that be a little less confusing, or am I just making too much?
Decision-maker is fine.
Decision-maker?
Decision-maker.
Okay.
Decider.
If you don't-
Or was it meant to be another director, like Gass?
It was meant to be a-
Jeanie or Lindsay or somebody to hop in and help make the decision? I mean, I don't know which, what, you know, the points.
But decision-maker would cover them, whoever they, okay.
And, again, that issue was not really essential to this. That is governed by chapter two forty-four, so I'll just read that sentence, "The VCB director is a decision-maker on all grant applications unless recused, in which case the city manager shall designate an alternate decision-maker for such applications." So, that'd be the request.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right. We do have a motion and a second to approve first reading with the changes that have been-
Yeah, do I have to revise? No.
You're all right, aren't you?
Yeah.
Amendment.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Did Counselor Casper second the motion?
Yes.
Who seconded the motion? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash seventeen, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter two point two four, Visitor and Convention Committee, amending section two point two four zero one zero, established, amending section two point two four zero six zero, powers and duties, and adding a new section two point two four zero eight oh, grant review procedures and appeals process. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance with changes as read.
You retain a motion?
I move to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance two zero one nine dash seventeen.
I'll second.
Mr. Counselor Mark, second. Any further deliberation, any thoughts? All right, roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great.
Thank you very much. And we have ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fourteen.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is first reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fourteen, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title seventeen, zoning, Chapter seventeen seventy-two, sign regulations, amending and updating city sign regulations. This afternoon, we found a couple typos, point out that on page fifty, the caption for seventeen seventy-two zero five zero should be "application and permit," just starts with the word "permit." Page fifty-two, the word "sale" is there, it should be "same." And on, let's see, page fifty-six, LCMC nine thirty-four oh-two-oh, the reference should be E, I think there's an F there. And so, those are just some typos. And then, apparently, we picked up an archived version of it when we uploaded it, so the correction to get rid of the two section six and two section seven went away, so we had to renumber after the first section six and then section seven. Instead of doing six and seven again, we'd like to start with eight and renumber to the end to thirteen, and then the codification section reads, codify sections nine through I did, in the memo, go through, I made the changes that we discussed in the questions that were in the last packet. I made those changes. There were two additional items that came up, but my recommendation on those is those need to be discussed at the design review standards process. And so, I did give you some alternate language, in case you wanted to go ahead and do something today, but my recommendation, and I think staff's recommendation, is to just refer those issues for the discussion at the design standards review.
And if I'm getting right, we've, you've captured the things that we thought, we wanted the design review to you.
In the council memo, I tried to elaborate on what I thought were the things that we really wanted, kind of like a scope of work of what it is we expect them to do. And the additional issue by the VCB, and the additional issue about the flags and the number of flags in the holidays, I think those issues should also be addressed by that.
I do notice you, in your staff memo, you said, "This will not, however authorized, flags in the right of way." Just to let counsel know, we have ongoing discussion with ODOT regarding these particular flags on those particular days in their right of way, and, or MOU, Memorant of Understanding, is in process.
And I actually included that in the discussion of what we need to figure out through the design review process. So, with that, unless you have more questions, I'd ask for approval of first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve the first reading?
Of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fourteen?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Casper. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, probably these things that are bugging me don't have to be dealt with in this ordinance, maybe it can be worked on in the future somehow, but I still find myself wrestling with this, the language regarding temporary signs, which pops up throughout the ordinance, and it, as I understand it, if you put it all together, the ordinance says essentially-
And I want to say, this is a really complex ordinance, and I appreciate the difficulty in coming up with the language, and I thank the attorney for the time and effort put into this, because it's really a difficult, fussy issue. But, so, if you put all these laws together, temporary signs, which is defined as a sign that is intended to be for a specified time only, that's in the definition of temporary sign on page fifty-six. Farther down in the ordinance, it says, "Temporary signs are prohibited, except when they're exempt." And the exemption, under the exemption language, a temporary sign can be put up at any time. So, it just seems like there's an internal contradiction in the, are they prohibited? Or, they're prohibited except when they're exempt, and they're, even though they're supposed to have a specified time, the exemption allows them to be up permanently, essentially. And I just wonder if there's a better way to say that.
I think, yes, this was difficult, and I kind of inherited it, but, again, we do have two ordinances, and the first ordinance is nine three four, and that's about temporary signs that don't require a permit, they're exempt from permitting. And then, this chapter seventeen does regulate temporary signs, but only those that require a permit, except for flags and windsocks, which are referenced in both. Yeah, I understand, but I do think, when you think about it, it is internally consistent. Ultimately, I would have liked to have said nothing in seventeen about temporary signs and put all the temporary stuff in nine three four, but we're already so far down the road here, I didn't want to. And maybe something that we talk about in the design review, because I'd like to simplify it, and to me, I need to separate temporary things, which, to me, a temporary thing is, it's just not gonna last that long. A flag, yeah, you can have a flag out there all year, but it's gonna become tattered and fall apart, and you're gonna have to replace it. So, that's why it says, temporary sign has to be- So that's why it says temporary sign has to be replaced when it becomes dilapidated, so.
It does say that the temporary sign that is exempt and can be up any time is limited to four square feet and needs to be replaced if it's dilapidated. So maybe that covers it. I had kind of an unrelated question, and I noticed that, this is really just for my edification. There's nothing in the ordinance that talks about, and I'm wondering, is there a state law? Or what happens if someone puts up an obscene sign or a pornographic sign or a patently offensive?
Well, one of the things that the League of Oregon Cities had recommended, and I think, I know you read those materials. They recommended that you not address obscene signs or indecent signs because that's content-based. The one thing we can do is say, hey, if it's in violation of a state or a federal law, you know, state statutes have various crimes associated with depictions of certain things, especially when children can see them. And that's why it says you can't violate state and federal law. That's the hitch to those things. But we didn't try to go off and say, like prior sign codes said, well, it has to have some kind of purpose and, you know, because that in Oregon went out the window years ago, so.
I actually had something else on it. I'm trying to remember what it is. I marked packet page 80, and I hope I'm still in the same ordinance.
That's the renumbering issue.
Okay.
Section, that's the second Section 6 and Section 7 appears on that page.
So-
Renumbered 8 through 13.
67678.
Oh, wait, so is that it? Am I in a different?
No. But he indicated it was a mistake, and he was going to renumber.
Oh, I see. But my question, though, was, okay, now I'm down to package page 80, line 5. To tell, oh, the Section 6, the Measure 49 reservation. And it talks about compensation claims pursuant to ballot Measure 49. And I found myself wishing that we had some explanation for what Measure 49.
I apologize. I should have probably told you why that was in there. Measure 49 is a state law that replaced Measure 37. And Measure 49 is very limited, whereas Measure 37 was extremely broad. And it was a compensation claim amendment that essentially would give you the right to damages if you felt that uses of your property were taken away. Well, Measure 49 restricted that extremely down to residential uses of single-family residential property. And so when you repeal, as we have here in striking through all this language, when you repeal, Section 2 strikes out all that existing language. Someone might say, well, this is a new law, and it applies to single-family residential homes, and it's going to adversely affect my ability to do what I want to do, so I'm going to file a compensation claim. Maybe not in the sign context, not a big issue. But in order to avoid getting compensation claims, you don't typically strike through and delete all the language of your code. You make only the changes that are necessary. But if you are going to clean it up and strike through, you reserve those sections just in case. So although Section 2 deletes all that language, all that language is still in full force and effect if someone files a Measure 49 claim. So if they say, ha, you have to throw away your regulations because this is a new ordinance, and I'm making a Measure 49 claim, and in Measure 49, you can either pay or waive the regulation. In no case are we going to go back before the regulations that are in place now. So we're just saving them for a possible claim. Very small likelihood of a claim here, but it's kind of something I just do just to make sure we don't step in it, so.
I guess I'm wondering, just as a matter of policy, if we're going to have language in an ordinance. I mean, somebody who moves into town and from out of state is curious about the ordinance, you know, sees this, how are they supposed to know what an Oregon measure from the past meant, you know? Not that they're reading this anyway.
Google it.
I think that's why I left 8 in the codification section of the ordinance. Because if you see the codification section, when I, you know, corrected it, said 9 through 13 would be codified. That leaves Section 8 in the codified version. So if you're curious about what that means, you're going to see it in our code. And then obviously, we have other sections in our code that talk about Measure 49 claims. We have a claims procedure. So you would eventually figure out what it's about.
That's all I had.
Okay. Counselor Hinton, did you have something you?
Well, I just, I know that our city attorney mentioned this, but I just want to make sure that our, as Lindsay is walking out the door.
Okay, the letter?
I, oh, I see what she's doing.
What?
Is that the consultant that is working with the planning department for the design standards, just that there's an understanding, or correct me if I am misunderstanding, that they'll have like a blank slate. They will have all this information about, you know, signage that we've been talking about, all the ordinances. But that when they are considering what signage will look like, where it'll be placed, what it'll be made out of, what sizes it'll be, all that kind of thing, that they will be able to start with a blank slate rather than regurgitating what we've just, you know, been deciding on these ordinances.
So to answer your question, Counselor Hinton, without doing a contract amendment and budget adjustment to add financials to the contractor consultant that's already been hired for the design standards, I've been in discussion with Mr. Chandler to actually do the signed code ordinance in-house. As we have learned through the council and our process over the last three or four months, signs are very emotional, and the need for them to go through the design standards here with our staff, understanding our community, would be better served and not take a long term. Now, if council does want to consider in the budget process for next year actually budgeting a broader scope signed code ordinance with a consultant, that would be something the staff could handle. However, we do not have the funds currently and the scope of contract for our design standard consultants was very specific on the commercial and multifamily. So I have been in conversation with the city manager and trying to handle the best direction for this.
I disagree 100 percent. I would, the idea-
What are you disagreeing on with the?
With the sign, with the design of the signs being in-house. I'm just saying that it was my understanding that we were including it with the design standards that is ongoing in that project with that consultant. And if a budget adjustment needs to be made, you know, that's another question.
So that Lindsay's telling us, we need to take it up with budget then in order, because they don't have a budget.
Right.
So we can deal with it that way.
In addition, the contract for the design standards did expire in December, and so we had to do a six-month extension to address the staff turnover and items with that. Now, doing it in-house would allow us to do, begin work on it now so that when we go out to the public with the design standards from MIG consultants, they could be brought, the projects could be brought together. However, you know, not extending the design standards for the commercial and residence. But, I mean, we're open to-
Yeah, I'd still rather see it go through the budget, you know, get budget and work with that same consultant. And because that was the understanding from the beginning. And the in-house, we've been going around and around and around and around and, you know, about the different ideas for signs, so.
So the way we handle that is budget. So you're really not disagreeing with Lindsay, you know, she's just for sharing with us information from her boss, Mr. Chandler.
I get it.
So I hear you. So we'll...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
While we're on that, and if Lindsay's here, Counselor Hinton, did you have time? It's not wrapped into this ordinance, but the letter that you had suggested, and I thought a good idea to go out to the business community to help clarify, did this letter meet those standards for you?
I just have a couple of things to say about the letter. Thank you for asking. If I can find out what page it is.
93.
Thank you.
93 and 94.
90.
93 and 94 is the letter.
All right, thank you. I really did appreciate this letter. As a retired public involvement government person, I would have put the chapter information at the end in like parentheses and put the part that the people really want to know up front. But that would be, otherwise, thank you very much. This is really, really informative, and I think it'll be very helpful. And, but that was my only comment about that, just from a public information point of view. Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we still have a motion with a second on the table. Any further discussion regarding this ordinance? Roll call, please.
Hinton?
Yep.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2019-14, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, Chapter 1772, sign regulations, amending and updating city sign regulations. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance with changes as read.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Hoagland and seconded by Casper. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have another signed ordinance, lucky us, catching up with the one we just passed, I'm assuming.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is first reading of ordinance number 2019-15, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 9, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare, revising Chapter 934. Signage to be consistent with Title 17. Ask for approval of first reading.
entertain a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2019-11?
15.
15. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Casper. Counselor Hoagland made the motion. Discussion. This is for Ms. Counselor Mark, isn't it temporary so we can, that you would have liked to cram more into here? Is that what you were explaining earlier?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not going to go there, but I did notice, I don't know if this was in the other one that I overlooked it, but on page 101, the inflatable signs, I thought we were going to include Halloween.
I thought that got bumped to the design standard.
I do have one question on that same page.
101?
101. The new E, and it just says that the inflatable signs may be used once securely attached to the ground. Well, there's one that we see around Christmas time that is actually attached to a building thing. So that was my question.
Your Honor, Counsel, if you want to change that, we could add "attached to the ground" or "structure." Added words would be "or" "structure."
Yeah, what makes me laugh every year.
Yeah.
That's a good catch.
Is that all right, everybody? Okay, make that change. Okay. We have a motion for, oh, please.
I just want to clarify again that on the flags, I'm going back to it. There was, we could change it to, hang on. It was in the memo. I'm getting there.
I believe it was in the memo on 14.
The two additional issues to consider, which is the flags that go out on the holidays.
Right.
That we could change it to, there is no limit on the number of flags. But the three flags, I just want to clarify, Richard, that that, it does address that if a business, the mall, has six flags in front because it's a multi-use. That it would address that, and we could keep it the way it is?
Well, I'm not certain that the six flags in front works, but it, because it is a, Richard defined it as something other than mall, but it's basically a fancy word that means mall. It has an allowance, it's one of the exempt signs. So signs like flags are exempt if the flags are located internally. So maybe not six flags out front, but maybe internally, they're probably going to have as many flags as they want.
Right, and I know that internally is not what, it's going to be the Highway 101 one. And we talked about whether we could do even a special event for them or something, or just change it for these holidays. Also because they do flags on the cultural center, which is, I think there's five different flags of all the different services. So they would, could not do that then, if you know what I'm saying? Do you know the display they do?
Right.
Okay. It said we could disagree and add.
Yeah, I understand. That's why I wrote the language. But I didn't really come up with a exemption process. Now, amending Chapter 934 is easy compared to going through Title 17. So, because it's temporary flags. So I imagine we could come up with a solution to this before we get too far into holidays, but I don't have one right now.
Joe, would it be, is something like that possible to get a permit for?
Well-
Can I get a temporary permit to add, you know, have a display?
Actually, I know that banners are allowed, you're allowed to get a temporary banner permit for up to 60 days or whatever, but I just don't know that we built in a more than three-flag provision. And it's, again, the limitation was three flags per business. And so what you're saying is that the multi-use mall facility, that's more than three flags. So we're probably okay based on that, but the cultural center is one business. So five flags isn't going to fly unless they, I guess, do it through a special event permit, and then we'd have to say that those are, you know, special events can authorize signs, but they have to be governmental signs, so it's government speech. So if you want to come in and put up flags that aren't official US or armed services flags, that would be, I prefer that we were doing it. If we were doing it, then it's our speech through the special event. They're just, it's like a license plate, right? They're, it's government speech. So it's not subject to, well, you didn't let me put up my flag of whatever, United Nations or whatever it is you want to put up.
So what you're saying is there are workarounds that we can come up for these two specific-
I think the whole purpose of pushing some of this difficult stuff off to the design review is to try to come up with some more creative solutions without having this sea littered with banners and flags everywhere. But for now, I think we have a workaround, but if I have to, I'll bring back an ordinance amendment to 934 to fix this, or at least to create some kind of process for it. Remember, if we're not, if we're, we can't say there's exemption for all US military services flags. We can't do that. It's content-based. And again, you're right, it's very nitpicky or, whatever the word was, to accurately describe this signed stuff. But I'll come back with something and I'll work with the consultant, see if we can get something worked out.
Could the, if the cultural center is a city-owned building, could there be an allowance built in for that somehow?
Well, that's part of the thing, is we have a lease with them, and we could, we could say as part of our agreement with you, you're going to put up this signage and it's our speech, and I think we could find a way around that. Fussy, you said the ordinance was fussy, that's what it is.
So we have a motion and a second to approve, and we've had deliberation. Call for the roll call.
Kuz.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
And Hoagland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That was first reading, right?
Yes.
So this is second reading of ordinance 2019-15 in ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title IX, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare, revising Chapter 935, sorry, 34. Signage to be consistent with Title 17. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
I move for approval and adoption of ordinance 2019-14.
Second.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen, sorry.
Sorry. We have a motion by Counselor Casper and a second by Counselor Hoagland. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mark.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
And Kuz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And one more ordinance, ordinance number 2019-19.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is first reading of ordinance 2019-19 in ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.04, Occupational Tax Permit, amending Section 5.04030, Place of Business Requirements, to add additional exemptions from the requirement to operate from within an enclosed building. Ask for approval of first reading. Your Honor, Counsel, this is a follow-on to the ordinances you've been adopting, having to do with vendors and special events and, you know, street vendors and concessions and even the park zone. What this does is simply, when you ask the question, you know, why did Mr. Chandler tell, you know, whoever was asking that food trucks are prohibited in the city, it's because this section, 5.04, says you got to operate within an enclosed building. And so we get into this argument, well, you know, you can't have a food truck because this section prohibits it. Well, but this section has some exceptions, and unfortunately, the exceptions didn't list everything that is accepted. So this is just to catch it up, so we're adding the 528 street vendors, which mostly food carts. We're adding food trucks if they become approved through a licensing ordinance under Chapter 5, and if they become authorized in zoning districts under Title 17, well, that's in process. And we're also recognizing that you may have people operating businesses not inside an enclosed building as part of parks concessions and as part of special events, which is all existing code, but simply wasn't cross-referenced here. Now, I suggest that you could delete the section on food trucks because that's not done yet, but it's not going to operate until it is done, because it refers to any licensing ordinance or any zoning districts where they're allowed. So my recommendation as you go forward, and this basically is housekeeping.
Questions of staff?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion?
Can I approve first reading of ordinance 2019-19, amending Chapter 5.04 OTP?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hoagland and a second by Ms. Kuz. Let's give her credit today.
I got to do one.
All right.
Just.
Deliberation.
It's a race.
Go ahead.
That it doesn't exclude if it's a, you know, is food truck too tight of a word? Or could it be like, you know, if it's a mobile kitchen or things like that, you know, just in the future? Will that be amended if in the event something else becomes?
I think that we'll make sure that food truck, any vehicle, trailer, whatever, we'll make sure that definition is adequate.
Cool, thank you.
Counselor Hinton?
And I'm just curious about on page 109E, and this is talking about licensed food truck located on private property, and I'm just wondering about why not on public property? I mean, if we had, we do have special events and.
And I have thought about doing that.
Like for community days, for example, we might want to.
And that's why, I thought about doing that, but I think that since there is a special event vendor down there in G or a parks concession vendor in F, those are covered. So as long as it's, you know, consistent with the zoning, if Lindsay adds the park zone as being a zone where street or food trucks, however you term them, are permitted, then the Title 17 issue goes away. This just removes another impediment, but we have a mechanism right now in place, the special event permit. And you amended the Title 17 to authorize concessions, which is commercial activity, and there's nothing here that says you can't do it under a special event permit.
Okay.
So I think we're covered.
Other questions?
Question.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Kuz.
Yes.
And Mark.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, Counsel, it's second reading of ordinance 2019-19 in ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.04, Occupational Tax Permit, amending Section 5.04030, Place of Business Requirements, to add additional exemptions from the requirement to operate from within an enclosed building. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, whatever, Mr. Mayor, I just forgot it. Second reading.
2019-19 and adopt the ordinance.
I'll second.
Yes, sir.
And we have a second from Counselor Mark. Thank you both. Any further discussion, deliberation, hearing none? Roll call, please.
Casper.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Kuz.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Onto Special Order of Business, we've got Arbor Day 2019 proclamation. And I'm wondering if Ms. Sprague is going to talk us through this, what the heck Arbor Day is, and why we care about trees? Why? Why?
Because they're beautiful.
I love trees.
Who said I love trees?
I do.
Mr. Kenny did in the back.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. I'm Jeanne Sprague, Parks and Recreation Director for Lincoln City. Not doing much of a presentation this year like I did last year. This is simply a proclamation to name an Arbor Day for Lincoln City, which is a requirement for our Tree City USA status, which is coming up on its 12th year now. We will be celebrating Arbor Day on April 20th at Regatta Park from 12:30 to 2:30. Counselor Hogan will be leading some hikes to the giant Sitka spruce. We will have some of our Parks and Recreation Board members there, talking about Arbor Day, handing out tree seedlings from the forest surface and educating the public on why we're a green city. So, any questions?
Twelve years, seems like yesterday.
Good job on 12 years.
Any, any questions?
If I could, could I read?
Yes, please.
You know, I've got the proclamation here. Whereas Lincoln City celebrates Arbor Day every year to honor the important role trees play in our daily lives and to maintain our Tree City USA status, 11 years and counting. And whereas Lincoln City residents have demonstrated their extraordinary support for trees in many ways, including a $3 million bond issued passed in 1998 for the purpose of preserving forests and other sensitive land within the city limits, and efforts in the past seven years to improve forest health in the city's open spaces. And whereas, on this Arbor Day, the city celebrates renewed efforts in our parks and open spaces to educate the public on the importance of trees by offering naturalist-led hikes and interpretive signage along with two successful thinning projects in Agnes Creek Open Space conducted in 2013 and 2014, the completion of the spyglass thinning project in 2016, the planting of the spyglass trees and the shrubs in 2017, and the projected thinning of Southeast Third and Keel Park. Whereas Lincoln City continues to improve the ecological health of the forests in the city's open spaces through removal of invasive species, restoration of native vegetation and tree planting with the successful partnerships of many nonprofit, local nonprofits and volunteers. This raises public awareness and opportunities for massive recreation through trail creation and maintenance. Now therefore, I, Dick Anderson, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the date of April 20th, 2019, as Arbor Day 2019 in the City of Lincoln City, and invite all citizens to join in celebration and the city's efforts to support healthy trees, forests, and forest ecology for the well-being of this and future generations, dated this 8th day of April 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll sign it. And I might note, Ms. Sprague, before you leave, I actually have gotten emails and calls from different individuals from outside the area noting some of these things, and I, I hope I'm pushing them the right place to the Parks and Rec and you.
Yes.
For volunteer opportunities and this, just this type of tours and discussions, so.
Yes, thank you for doing that exactly. We love volunteers.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any, anything else on Tree Day? Counselor Hoagland, you seem to be Mr. Spruce, so, you know, I just, here's your floor time.
Oh, we have more things coming.
Do you?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
We'll name that later.
As I read this invasive species stuff, that seems to come up too, so, you know, I hope you won't forget, you know, that some things have to disappear in life.
So it's the natural order of things.
Thank you. We have then city manager, city attorney reports, and this is where we had a insert in the agenda on media, defining media. And as you all, if I can take it, this is having to do with the question whether Lincoln City homepage qualifies as, quote, "news media," as the term is used in ORS 192.660, parentheses number four. This would allow that organization to have representatives in the city's executive sessions. You all received the report from our hearing officer that we asked to take a look and make recommendations. He did. And so this would be the opportunity where you can either decide to take his recommendation or reject that recommendation. The floor is open. Motion would work, or then we could talk, discuss.
I, I'm going to embarrass myself a minute. I read the memo and I actually appreciated the memo, but I'm thinking the final recommendation was to approve, okay? Yeah, I would move that we accept the hearing officer's recommendation to approve.
To approve. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Counselor Kuz. Discussion, deliberation?
I just want to say, I was really glad that we went through that process. I had hesitations at first, but when I read the memo, I, I thought it was, well, not just that it was well reasoned, but I, I thought going through the process maybe sends a message to future, you know, in the future, people who might be in this situation, to know that we do take it seriously and that there is a process to go through, and I thought it underscored that. Also, I'm wondering, I understand that it was sent to us confidentially. Is there a reason, I mean, can we make it public?
Well, that, we can.
That's kind of like your second question. If you want to release it, it's your privilege, so if you want to, you can.
Recommend that we do that.
I didn't, I didn't read the report. I don't have the report. I don't know what it says.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to abstain.
Yeah, the report was to recommend approval, and as Counselor Mark indicated, gave kind of his thought process and steps. We have, any other further discussion on that issue? Go ahead.
There was some mention about enforcement of non-disclosure requirement, that that would be included or mentioned in our executive sessions. I think that's something to adhere to.
Yeah, I think if you just, if you pass a motion to release the document, then I'd be happy to tell you I agree with the hearings officer in that we need to make sure that that's.
Reiterated.
Yeah.
Now that, if I can, I read that to believe, to be, in essence, the statements we always make at executive sessions where can't be recorded and reported out of. So what I read was perhaps a suggestion at the start and at the end of each session, reminding those in attendance. Is that what you had in mind, Counselor?
Yes, to reinforce it.
Yeah.
Then there was also credentials, you know, I would feel comfortable somewhere along the line in future reference, if we know that people have had a background, maybe there's no college requirement or degree, or, but in the future, exactly what credentials would indicate their formal affiliation with whatever media source they're with or experience. I know it's, it was vetted.
Yeah, I think in reference to the hearing officer credentials, is that what you're relu? I'm interpreting what he really meant was we're approving homepage and it's, so it's credentials that whoever walks in the room is, in essence, authorized by homepage, those credentials.
Meaning whoever homepage might appoint.
Yes.
Well, I don't think that it's wide open. I think at this point, there was only two people that were indicated. Yeah, if they wanted to have somebody else, they'd have to demonstrate that that person was in fact a representative of that organization.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second to approve the hearing officer's recommendation. Roll call, please.
Hinton.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Standing.
Kuz.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
And Casper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you want to ask the follow-up?
Yeah, then the follow-up question is to authorize the release of this recommendation document. And part of that, in the write-up, was a question of whether redacted or not, and I personally didn't see anything in. and I personally didn't see anything in there that needed to be redacted. I think it, as Counselor Mark, you alluded to, it kinda gave the, a good background of why we were jumping through hoops and what it takes, so... So the question would be whether you wanna release that, 'cause we can, 'cause it was given to us, and we could release it publicly if somebody inquired.
If you wanna motion, I, I move that we release the memo, make it public.
And unredacted?
Redacted.
There's a motion to prove the release of this document, unredacted. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay?
Nay.
Let Counselor Casper with a nay?
Staying.
And one abstain.
Counsel, I just wanted to point out that I think the hearings officer very strongly said that if, if your confidentiality is breached in violation of those statements you make and then repeat at the executive session, that he recommended that he disagreed with the A G and that you really could take action based on that, and I'm, I'm in agreement with that, so...
Great. Mr. Appichello, did you have anything else or anything for Mr. Chandler?
No, I do not.
Okay. At this point, anybody from the public, this would be another opportunity for address counsel, seeing none. City councilors, Counselor Kooz, you interested in any comments, bring us up to date on anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Don't have anything.
Counselor Casper?
There was a neighborhood watch meeting at Nell Scott Neighborhood Association this weekend, it was very well attended, everybody from the A B C D avenues was, was there, and I think they will be pursuing a local neighborhood watch for that community.
Good to hear. Counselor Hinton?
I would say ditto on what Counselor Casper just said, but also at the Rhodes End Neighborhood.
Busy neighborhood, busy meetings or...
Well, the idea is catching on the, so that's a good thing. I also have something else, Community Days, the tiny houses, Counselor Hoagland snagged one, I did too, with the help of Sean Kerr, and I'm looking way down there at Counselor Kooz, because she is volunteering to be there for a couple of times, and we've had a, those of us that have been working together on this have had a, have had a really good overall response, but just not available from tiny house manufacturers, so I think that was, that's wonderful. We also, the, I'm sorry that Lindsay left, but we also have, have a handout now from the city, the planning department put together a handout, so now people will know how they can, if they want a tiny house, that they'll actually be able to do it if they follow the description, and that's a wonderful thing.
Could you share with us what is actually gonna happen during Community Days, which is the week of...
Starts the nineteenth on Friday, yeah. At least the house that, the tiny house manufacturer that I have been talking with is going to be there the nineteenth through the Wednesday.
Beware?
At the community center, thank you, in the parking lot, the northeast part of the parking lot of the community center, and I'm not sure, Riley, if you found out how, when yours...
Not exact, I will, no, I don't know which, which one of the days yet, no.
Okay, we're still working on it, and, and then the public can come and have a look at these and see what they think, and it'll be just great fun, and then Counselor Kooz is going to be going to, there's gonna be a exposition in Portland the week, the weekend, the last weekend of, not the nineteenth, but twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Yeah, so she'll be going to that and collecting more names and contact information for doing this in the future.
So what I hear you saying is you're looking for investors, that this is an opportunity?
Well, it could be investors or people who want to, want a tiny house, they can purchase one, they can get to know what it means. A lot of people quite aren't sure what...
But is involved?
Yes.
Okay, because we certainly, as a council, cleared the way for the tiny houses, all right? Maybe a fad, but, you know.
You never know.
That's right.
I mean, it's supporting councils' work that we've been doing for affordable housing, and so it's a big deal.
Right.
Also, I want, had one more announcement, which is that U.S. Rep. Peter DeFazio has been working on earthquake preparedness and funding for that, and hopefully that gets through the House and then gets through the Senate, and maybe we'll have funding available specifically for the Pacific Northwest, so that might be something we might wanna keep an eye out for.
Good. That it? Counselor Mark?
Uh, no.
Nothing? Counselor Hoagland?
Two things, so one would be the, on the V C C, you know, looking at, if, if the rest of you just would like to entertain, looking at the role V C C is in specific regards to advising and revising the marketing aspects. My reason is because we have this appointed positions to the V C C, and they are making marketing decisions and advising the V C B director to do marketing for the City of Lincoln City, so in that capacity, I think if a work session could be talked about to see, hey, what is that oversight committee or an advisory committee, and what roles should they play in that?
So it's just raising the question?
Correct.
No, I think that's fair.
Yeah, so if that...
So it may be a wording that, that needs to be clarified.
Wording and roles, sure, absolutely, and to talk about what, what roles do volunteer-appointed people have in the marketing decisions of the City of Lincoln City with a, you know, a budget as ours. So that's something that I would like to do, and secondly, to the man who came, talking about the beach climbing signs, I think if, if it's at all possible to see what are the standards of other cities for those high, high, you know, those high-traffic areas, you know, and I know it's, I've never done it, but carving your name up there, you know, erosion is a very real thing, and it significantly affect, negatively impacts your home, and, and it's a very real thing, and that riprap is very expensive, especially as, you know, the higher you go up, and how can you engineer it and all that stuff, so, you know, if there's a way to see what's the standard, how, where and how often, you know, what do other cities do in conjunction with the state of Oregon? And is there a temporary thing that we can put at all of our beach access points, and before we get that information to say, hey, as a reminder, you know, please remember not to climb any of the cliff faces, not only is it dangerous, but it negatively impacts the land?
Yeah, that's why I asked for his information and stuff.
Yeah.
'Cause I, I know there's signage that, and I think he's right, it, I had to put it up myself on my bank, it's my, in front of mine.
For sure.
And I made sure it was clear.
Yeah.
Don't dare.
Yeah.
But it, it does get down to then an enforcement issue, and, but I think with signage, then even the people on the beach are, are more empowered to...
Right, the sign doesn't have to say, warning, get out, you're gonna get shot, but I mean, really, this, this is really dangerous, I mean, really.
Yeah, but there's an O R S that says, don't climb on it, so, yeah.
In addition to, yeah.
So, but your point's a good one, we look at the access points too and try to...
Yeah.
Make some other, besides sneaker waves, here are things that...
Right, here, here's some really important coastal things that you may not know, and this is, and this is for your, you know, for you and us.
I agree.
There's, there's also a, like, five thousand dollar fine associated with it. My neighbor is an Oregon State Police volunteer, and evidently they patrol, the state police patrols those cliffs, but there's only two volunteers in the whole city, and they happen to be part-time, so it's kind of hard to get the people who are carving. So I'm glad we're looking into it.
Yeah.
Do a side job.
Mr. Appichello?
I, I shut the computer off, but there is an O A R, and I think it's ten thousand dollar fine, actually. So there, on the first issue of the V C C, that the powers and duties say that the recommendation on the marketing plan prepared by the V C B director, but that is to review, advise, and make recommendations as desired to the city council. So there, the V C B director prepares a marketing plan, the committee reviews it and makes recommendations to you, so that's in paragraph B of their sign, so their recommendations to the director have to do with the grants for nonprofits for, anyway, just so there's clarity on that.
But, but there, what I hear from Counselor Riley is there may be some confusion in where it is, and, and just to bring it out...
Yeah.
Might be helpful, so, you know. Anything else from anybody? You know, it's only eight oh four, and I won't know what to do with myself, you know, with that, why don't I call it a night? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good job.
Now we're earlier than I thought.